Good, go. Called order the regular call meeting, Monday, April tenth, twenty seventeen. Who's gonna lead us in the pledge, chief? Kurt, did you call the roll, please?
Tom. Tim. Patricia. Jim. Sarah. And Justin.
The only announcement I have at this time, unless somebody's got something else, is our city cleanup week is the seventeenth through the twenty-first of this month. Now, I've been told by Ms. Vergey over here and Joe Keaton that if you've got something that you want to get rid of, please make it a one-time deal. In other words, put everything out that you want thrown away, they'll come around that one time and they'll take it away for you, but don't try to call us and have three or four different pickups for certain individuals. It makes it too hard on us and plus, Apple Valley's rates have risen a little bit. Is that understandable? Some people call it double dipping, and that's what we'll call it. Just a one-time deal if you don't care, put everything that you want thrown away out and we'll come around one time and pick it up, is that correct?
They need to call ahead.
And you need, they need to call ahead of time. Do they call you, Ms. Vergey?
That's next week, then, right?
Seventeenth through the twenty-first.
People ask me that question, so I'm sure you guys did the paper and on the radio.
So it'll be that for Easter, when's that for Easter?
It'll be next week.
The week after Easter, yes.
And when's that choose thing, has that already been done, the pride thing?
Uh, that's already been done, and if Mr. Hale wants to step up and tell you about that, he's right there.
We did the pride spring clean last Wednesday, so we synced up section Route forty on Old Olive Road, section Route forty from Cam Mechanics to Vet Clinic. We got, we had some extra time, so a crew went up South Side and even cleaned it up. I think we collected probably close to ninety-seven bags of trash. Here, I want to thank Speedway, I want to thank Ride Aid, Angie's Cast Iron Grill, I want to thank the chief and his men for helping us out, Joe Keaton and his men, and Doug Sabler and his crew for helping us out there.
And if we've left anybody out, let's thank them too. It was a good job, well done.
Excuse me, Mayor Runyon, what's the number for people to call to schedule?
Twenty-six hundred. That would be seven-eight-nine, twenty-six hundred. Now, I would like to also add that we as a council and a city mayor, we are going to try to get something in the process that we want abandoned properties cleaned up, we want to make sure that if you own a tenant building, that your tenants understand they cannot throw their trash over the hill. We want to make sure that our streets are clean, and we as a council are gonna take a strong stand on this, that we want to make sure that our city is cleaned up, and we will also be contacting people who own buildings downtown, and it's their responsibility for keeping their storefronts clean and up to date, and also their store rears clean and up to date. Personally, I don't like coming in on Veterans Bridge and seeing the backside of those stores looking like they are. Now, I'm not trying to be difficult here by any means, but if we want this city to be presentable, then we're gonna have to take a stand and make sure these things are done. And I am off my soapbox. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March thirteenth, twenty-seventeen. All in favor? Opposed. I need an approval of departmental reports. All in favor? Opposed. I need an approval to pay, to pay the bills as presented. All in favor? All opposed. Well, I'll tell you what, Jim, there are certain things I want put on my grave when I, when I bed and gone, the word's gonna be put on yours is presented.
Sounds good to me, at least somebody else acknowledged me.
Alright, we need to get down to business. There is a request for increase for Johnson County senior citizens' contributions for fiscal year twenty eighteen. The increase of that is going to go from fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty, I'm sorry, from fifty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty to fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty, that's a two-thousand-dollar increase.
Now, is that the combination from county and city, that, or is that just us?
So, the county matches that.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Do I need to read that? I think it's, I think it's due to utilities and... But now, this letter here, here says it is matched with fiscal court.
We pay their fuel, Mayor.
Well, I think they do a good job over there, Bill Mike, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of elderly people that can't get a good meal if they don't have a meal, no meals, I think they do an excellent thing over there.
Well, Jim, we're just about there. I think... I think, I think they do a good job, too.
You're exactly right.
As long as our budget permits, as long as our budget permits.
I was gonna ask, you know what, where are we at to adjust the budget at to get for this two-thousand dollars, what's that come out of the general, out of administration?
General fund, yeah.
Are we alright to do that within?
Yes, as of right now, we are.
Because I know we'll have to adjust our budget, you know, compensate for that.
It will, when the new budget's done, Jamie will adjust that then, yeah.
Yeah, it's FY eighteen. Yeah, I need a motion for that request.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed. Uh, I would like a motion to appoint Mike Short to a vacant Paintsville Tourism Commission position.
I second.
All in favor? Opposed. I would like a motion to appoint Jimmy Wright to a vacant Utilities Commission position.
I'll make that motion, too.
I'll say it.
I'll make Jim.
All in favor? Opposed.
Is he here tonight?
He's here.
He's right here.
I don't know you, but anyway, I just wanna tell you that, I really heard a lot of good things about you, and you really have a good reputation, and I like that, and I'm glad to see y'all here. I appreciate that.
You do well.
Well, we appreciate you devoting your time. Just go ahead and buy you a boat.
I don't know if that means you're gonna go up the river, or that.
Make sure you got your paddle with you.
I know he'll do the right thing, you know.
He will. He will do the right thing. Item number four, we need a motion for approval to advertise for bids to update the radio communication for nine-one-one for a CRS grant. All in favor? Opposed. You sure can, they're sitting right there.
Is the grant, what's it for, it's just to upgrade the equipment we already have?
Everything, it will be updated from the other side of that one more. We just completed a grant updating the ad system, computerized discount, that would be about ninety thousand dollars, and this will be a grant to update the Red Hill side. And this is through wireless money, you didn't remember that, we talked about that before, we get wireless money back from the state every quarter, but then they take a certain percentage of that and put it over for grant funds, and we've always had real good luck in receiving those funds, so this year we need to wind up that for the Red Hill side.
Actually, they, this particular grant requires us to bid the project prior to actually submitting the grant, that's what we're asking permission to bid it, and in the bid specs it will say this project will only be awarded if the funds are awarded, so that's, it's kind, it's the only grant that I know like that, that you have to bid ahead of time, and that's why we're asking for permission to bid, and then we'll submit the application, and then when it's awarded, you don't have to go through the bid process, you just do already have it.
Okay, item number five, we need a first reading of amended ordinance with, for the water rates.
Before we do that, can we talk about?
Yes, we can, we can...
You go ahead and read it first, can we go ahead and read it first?
You want him to go ahead and read it first, Ms. Sarah?
I, I mean, whatever you all wanna do, but...
It's an ordinance enacted to amend the city ordinance codified in the city's Code of Ordinances Title Five, Public Works, Chapter fifty-four, Water, Section five, four-point-oh-two, Water Rates, whereas prior to the within amendment to Section fifty-four-point-oh-two, the rates for water service for customers of Paintsville Utilities effective July one, two thousand nine are as follows, and then the current ordinance is set out with the table with the rates. From the time of passage of the amended ordinance until July one, two thousand nine, the above stated effective date of the rate increase set forth in Section A, the rates for water service for customers of Paintsville Utilities shall remain at the previously established rates as effective one fifteen-oh-nine, and it sets out the additional increases throughout the year, so this, this is the old ordinance. Whereas, the City Council, City Paintsville hereby intends to amend the city's ordinance pertaining to water rates in order to enact the following rate increases and additional provisions required by USDA Rural Development in order to secure necessary funding for utility expansion and repair maintenance projects. Now, therefore being ordained by the City of Paintsville, Kentucky, that the above stated ordinance shall be amended to provide as follows. Section A, effective May one, two thousand seventeen, the rates for water service for customers of the Paintsville Utilities shall be as follows, and the amended rates are set forth. Section B, there shall be, in accordance with the requirements and directives of Rural Development, an increase in water rates as follows which shall occur the earlier of May one, two thousand eighteen, or the date of the loan closing on the downtown I and I project to be funded by Rural Development, and it sets out the increase for those rates. Section C, in addition to the adjustments set out in Division A and Division B, there shall be a yearly adjustment of water rates effective March one, two thousand nineteen, and each March one thereafter based upon the Consumer Price Index as published by the Wall Street Journal. The water rates shall be adjusted according to that Consumer Price Index and shall be placed on the April billing in each month thereafter.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I got to be quick, because I'm a little bit not clear about this, okay? So, when we discuss this, and Bob, you might wanna come up here a minute, if you don't care. I, I, I just want to clarify in my mind, okay, what you're saying, okay? Alright, it says that the effective rate that you're wanting on May one, or the, up to five thousand gallons, right, is six dollars and eight cents, right? Am I reading this right now, this? But it says inside the city, your effective rate, water consumption, six eighty-two, is that right?
Okay, that's for the next five thousand gallons.
So, it's the same, right? It's the same right here, six eighty-two for the next three.
Right, your, your first two thousand, thirteen ninety-eight, the next three thousand is six eighty-two per thousand, in the bank.
Okay, so this is six eighty-two per thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, we were judging this on five thousand gallons or less, you know what I mean, that's what we're trying to get. So, if we, if you've got a, under this, under this ordinance right here, if we got a, I told you, five thousand gallons of water, what's our, how much rate, I don't, I couldn't find that paper.
At what point are you asking, Jim, initially, or...
I think what he's asking, Bob, is, 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 he, he, he wants to know how much it's gonna cost the cur, the customer per month. The way I'm looking at five thousand gallons here, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm wrong a lot, uh, is that it looks like to me the total cost per customer's gonna be three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Am I, am I reading that right? You've got, you've got two ninety-seven change on water inside the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And then you've got eighty cents change on sewer. So that comes to three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So that's what it's gonna cost per household, right?
Effective May one.
Effective May one.
That's five thousand or less?
Five thousand gallons, that's what it'd be. Now, if you're less than five thousand, wouldn't do that much.
Yeah, yeah, if, if you're at four thousand, it's two thirty-eight for water, and then it's sixty-five cents for sewer.
Well, what I was going by was, what it was here in mine, which was four dollars, fourteen cents, and then you go into six eighty-two, but you, so you're saying, so what I was reading, I was reading wrong, you know, okay, alright, that's what I'm trying to get clarified. So you said how much again, Bill Mike?
Three dollars and seventy-seven cents is the way I got it figured.
Five thousand gallons, that is correct, okay, alright, then that's, okay, and then, and then the, that's with the sixteen percent increase, and we do a two percent on the sewer then, right?
Yes.
And how much was the sewer, I mean, we're going to that next, but I mean, the sewer was eighty cents of the store. Eighty cents, okay, so that's included in the... That's fine, then, alright.
Yeah, yeah, the way that reads across the board is five thousand gallons is gonna be two dollars and ninety-seven cents for water, and it's gonna be eighty cents for sewer.
That's acceptable, then, okay, 'cause that's down from that eight dollars, and that's what I was, that's gonna see how far down we, that we got it, and make sure the public knows that, you know what I mean, so.
But we're just voting the nine, or we're, for agreeing, so, just so people will know, sixteen percent on the water increase basically, and two percent on the sewage, correct?
Yes, initial.
Okay, that's an initial, that, that's all for this year, right? And how did we come up with that figure?
Yeah, well, I want, you know, another question, you know, did you do a...
We provided Bell Engineering with information, they did a rate study, and worked with Rural Development to determine these rates.
Because we never need to see a rate study, it's ridiculous, I was, that was my question, I was right, I'm glad you brought that up, sir, so.
Yeah, because, well, that's the only thing I think we covered when we talked to you all the last time. I didn't, I didn't realize we were gonna have another two percent increase when we did it, but again, but...
In, in a year?
I, I knew it was gonna be an increase in, in the water.
Well, the, the sewer does not go up very much. That's a, that's a one-time deal on that.
So it's a one-time deal?
Okay.
Other than your cost of living.
And I noticed from your all, from your last meeting, you all decided to do away with that, that cost of living thing.
The co, the cost of living increase will come back in, in two thousand, I think.
That's what I mean, but you, you did, you did everybody.
No, we felt like that cost of living up to this point was built into these rates. I'm glad to see you did that, okay, that's good.
That's a good discussion, and I can't believe you all left it up to me to figure that out.
I couldn't find that paper, that's what I was looking for.
So we just need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion on the first amendment for waters for water, we gotta do them separate.
No, we gotta do them separate. This is water. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Now, we need a first reading of the amended ordinance for sewer rates.
An ordinance enacted to amend the city ordinance codified in the city's Code of Ordinances Title Five, Public Works, Chapter fifty-two, Sewer, Section fifty-two-point-one-oh-one, Sewer Rates, whereas prior to the then amendment, the Section fifty-two-point-one-oh-one, the rates for sewer service for customers of Paintsville Utilities effective August second, two thousand four, has, are as follows, and the rates were set out with the additional provisions as currently written. Now, therefore being ordained by the City Council, City Paintsville, Kentucky, that the above stated ordinance shall be amended to provide as follows, effective May one, two thousand seventeen, the following table rates shall apply to each user of sewer, of the sewage treatment system. This table includes rates for user charges based on the volume of metered or estimated water consumption, and then the table sets out the rates. Section B, normal monthly billings for the sewer service shall be determined on the basis of each user's metered water consumption and rates provided by Division A of this section. It is recognized in the assessment of such charges that not all metered water consumption is returned to the sewers. For the purpose of assessing service charges equitably, the average percentage of metered water consumption returned to the sewer is deemed to be ninety percent. Where it can be evidenced that the proportion of metered water consumption actually returned to the treatment system by an individual customer is significantly different from ninety percent, service charges shall be determined on the basis of actual wastewater discharge. In this event, the volume of wastewater discharge shall be determined by using additional water meters to segregate water consumption, that is, returned to the sewers and/or actual metering of wastewater flows and/or any other procedure agreed upon by the user and manager of Paintsville Utilities Commission as, as a reasonable method of determining flows. The city reserves outright to require the installation of additional water meters and/or wastewater flow meters for the purpose of determining actual monthly wastewater flows. Section C, there shall be a yearly adjustment of sewer rates effective March one, two thousand nineteen, and each March one thereafter based on the Consumer Price Index as published by the Wall Street Journal. Sewer rates shall be adjusted according to the Consumer Price Index and shall be placed on the April billing in each month thereafter.
We need a motion and a second, don't we?
I'll make a motion where you accept them in the one for sewer rates.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution of the city of Paintsville, Kentucky, for Paintsville Utilities, do you have that?
This is a resolution concerning the Rural Utility Service of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, uh, letter transmitted to Mayor Runyon, set forth a series of conditions that must be understood and agreed to before consideration of an application for funding relating to the, it says, Powell Sewer Edition, I guess it's about Powell. And it just sets out a number of conditions that I'm assuming...
That we, that we do meet.
There's a, a loan resolution, an equal, equal opportunity employment...
Equal opportunity employment agreement.
All, this is standard things that have been approved, I think, in other contexts, federal collection policies for consumer and commercial debts.
We went over that the other day with me and Mr. Pack, and what was the gentleman's name we went over it with?
Doug Hoff.
Yeah, Doug Hoff, and it was things that we already met, it was, so, I think they just need a council approval on it, is that correct, Bob, when I say that?
It's a blank resolution from all of the documents.
Yeah.
I, I so moved.
Second, if, uh, resol, make a, uh, approval of a res- resolution authorizing them to.
Do we need to yea or nay that?
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we need a motion to accept the low bid of Boca Enterprises for Paintsville Utilities.
Who is Boca Enterprises? We know.
He's local, it's a lo, a local company, the, uh, the principal manager is Probie Bowlin.
And that's to do these, these things that, validation for them?
Now, this is for, this is for.
Three streets.
Three, three zero.
It would be the alley between Tenth and Eleventh Streets, Broadway and Madison Avenue, uh, the north side of seven hundred block of Walnut Avenue, and the upper end of Sixth Street, and do I need to?
Would these bids, would these bids submitted to Utilities and after?
These, uh, these are needed, for bad, all three of these projects.
Yes, yeah, they are.
Actually saw one of them in progress when they were digging out the old lines, and the bomb was there, more, more than once, unfortunately, on the bomb, as their project, so.
Fifty with the head of six, three nine minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept this bid, uh, so, and I'm sure it's, it's made all books.
Just a second. All right, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is open bids on the ambulance, and what do we have, Ms. Rogan? One. Makes it kinda easy. Uh, is that Sean McCuster, submitted by Sean McCuster, is that correct, Chief? Uh, two thousand three Ford E three fifty, wheeled coach type, three ambulance. Uh, the total amount of that is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred, is that correct? So, do we need a motion to accept that bid, is that correct? I need a motion to accept this bid.
Make a motion, make accept a bid on the ambulance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Lewandowski wants to bring up a discussion, and I would appreciate it if we could hold that discussion amongst city council members only. And then if it goes any further, then we'll, we'll take the next step necessary. Is that okay with everybody?
Alright, uh, I believe, uh, we need to make a change, uh, have alcohol sales on Sunday from one to nine P.M. Hopefully, we can get restaurants in here to make our economy grow, I mean, we need to do something. Whatever we got going on right now is not working, and, uh, I just really think that this needs to happen. And also with the, you know, signage, that's, that's ridiculous, we need to just do away with the signage, I mean, if it gets too bad, we'll intervene. That's how I look at it, I mean, you guys don't have to be for it, but be of mind for it.
Is there any discussion at all?
I've just added this, with, any such, uh, change would require an amendment to the ordinance, which would require first and second reading, and as any ordinance would be amended, so, the, the, I would add, and under state law, the, the local, uh, jurisdiction can set the, uh, restrictions on these matters, including the Sunday sales and the, the signage, those are, all are a matter of local ordinance. Yeah, I'd have that.
And a separate permit for Sunday sales for the people to choose to do it, I know they did that in Pikeville.
Yes.
There was a fee associated with that.
On the, on the buy the drink sale, I think the malt beverage sale is just a, your hour drug.
Yeah.
There would be a separate license required for the Sunday buy the drink, for the spirit, for the steel spirit to buy, yeah.
Uh, well, you said bigger?
Yes.
But, do, do you know how much you increase the revenue, or any, or?
Well, I, I can find that out.
I'm gonna look at population. So, one thing, yeah, one thing we gotta look at is, what we do on Sunday, NCAA tournaments are on Sunday, you have Daytona five hundred, you have Super Bowl, you know, if we have a restaurant with TVs, uh, you know, stuff here for the, you know, for people to do, I mean, that's another thing, I mean, when these entities are coming here, you know, one of them is in Paintsville, they wanna see that their employees have something to do, I worked for Slummer Jay, and Paintsville always got passed up because it wasn't dry enough time. That's why we opened up the Prescott Burn, Martin County, and that's what, investment, yeah, that's what we gotta, you know, drive towards, we gotta get people here, and that's the only way we're gonna sell ourselves out, blue.
I hope, I hope we don't have to depend on alcohol, so. I, I'm gonna say that, that's something that, I mean, restaurants are important, but I mean, and I've preached this all along, jobs are the most important thing we gotta have here, I don't care, you know, that's to build our economy, we gotta have jobs, and, you know, and jobs, you know, we gotta have some high-paying jobs, too, like we're, that's like we're doing out at the Entrepreneur Center and so forth, most people that I've heard make comments about this, people I've talked to, they don't agree with it. So, I don't agree with it, so, I mean, that's just my take on it, okay, so.
But see, that's a, that's a good thing about this council, everybody's got their own opinion, and you know, we don't need to belittle anybody because they've got a certain opinion or whatever, and everybody's got their opinion, and that's
Open discussion, you talk about it, I know, you know, get the public involved, I mean, that's what we need to do.
But that's what makes this council a good council, is we've all got different opinions.
I do agree with Mr. Lewandowski.
Okay.
I do support it, and I support it for economic reasons, and this two thousand seventeen, this is nineteen seventeen.
Okay.
It would be different, in my opinion, if the surrounding counties and towns were the same way, but, you know, if we could make a hundred dollars a month, that's a hundred dollars a month. I mean, most people that choose to have a, a, an adult beverage, and choose to have one on Sunday, they'll purchase their drinks on Saturday anyway. I don't think, that's an opinion of mine, at home, so, you know, I'm on record as supporting it.
Anybody else? Okay.
You, you got a second or anything, or?
No, 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 we don't, all we wanted to do was have an open discussion, to find out where everybody stood, and then we can, we can possibly go from there.
There's nothing.
Gotcha.
If you wanna sponsor amendment to the ordinance, we can draft something.
Yeah, we can draft something up if you want to try to change, amend the ordinance or whatever, because that, that's what has to be done. The ordinance will have to be amended.
Any change, you have to have an amendment to the ordinance, so, that'll be for another day.
Yeah, another day.
Thank you.
Good discussion, that's great. Uh, we want to, uh, amend the ordinance for the Tourist and Convention Commission at this time, and Mr. Bowlin will read you the amendments that we want to make.
This would be an amendment to the Tourist and Convention Commission ordinances, uh, the amendments are, as noted in the, uh, highlighted sections here. Uh, first section, that's amended as section one, sixteen point oh two, membership terms. The proposed amendment is a section G, the commission shall elect a chairman and treasurer, who shall serve without compensation. These positions or any other member writing checks shall be bonded in an amount commensurate to the largest amount of money on hand in any given month. Uh, section one, sixteen point oh three, purpose and powers, amended to providing that commission may employ such personnel, make such contracts that are necessary to effectively carry out the purpose of KRS nine one eight point three fifty, at sec. Such contracts may include, but shall not be limited to, the procurement of promotional services, advertising services, and other services and materials relating to the tourist and convention business, provided however that such contracts be made only with persons, organizations, and firms with experience and qualifications for providing promotional services and materials such as advertising firms, chambers of commerce, publishers, and printers. Uh, annual request for funds. This is section one, sixteen point oh four. The Recreation and Tourism Commission shall annually submit to the city council a request for funds for the operation of the commission for the ensuing year. The council shall include the commission in its annual budget, which shall provide funds to the extent it deems necessary for the operation of the commission in its annual budget. Section B, the city recognizes the Paintsville Park, Pool Playground, Paintsville Golf Course, and any other city recreational parks or facilities existing now or hereafter established to be a major attraction for visitors in the area, and it is the intent of this chapter to provide a sufficient funding to the city park system to maintain city recreational facilities at a high level for future growth and development of the city's tourism economy. The Recreation and Tourism Commission should therefore include in its annual budget funds for the cost of maintenance, acquisition, construction, and operation of city park facilities used for the attraction and promotion of tourist and convention business, including athletic facilities. Upon the advice and consent of the Recreation and Tourism Commission, a maximum of forty-five percent of its funds for the hotel, motel, restaurant tax collected in the previous fiscal year shall be budgeted to the city parks and recreation for the Paintsville Golf Course and such purposes, for such purposes. In section one, sixteen point oh five, fiscal limitations. The city council forbids the Recreation and Tourism Commission to issue revenue bonds or borrowed money beyond the fiscal year without the express approval of the city council. The fiscal year shall begin January one of each year and terminate on the following, June thirty. July one to June thirty. Uh, section B, the commission is strongly encouraged to obtain approval of city council for any purchase of projects that are estimated at cost of, of ten thousand dollars or more. In obtaining approval, the commission will provide to city council any known documents, plans, data, research, appraisals, blueprints, et cetera, regarding the per, the purchase of a project. Section C, the books of the commission and its account as established in KRS nine one eight point three ninety shall be audited as provided in KRS six five eight point oh three oh. The independent certified public accountant or auditor of public accounts shall make a report of the commission to the association's submitting list of names from which commission members are selected, to the appropriate chief executive officer, to the state auditor of public accounts, and to the local governing body or bodies that establish the commission that was audited. Copy of the audit report shall be made available to the commission, or shall be made available by the commission to members of the public upon request and at no charge. The next change will rocket to, uh, section one, sixteen point one seven, payment of tax due date, there's a new section that says the funds collected from this tax shall be maintained by the city clerk in a special fund and dispersed to the commission in accordance with the city's annual budget. Any money not expended by the commission during any fiscal year will be used to make up a part of the commission's budget for the next fiscal year. Then we have, uh, section one, sixteen point one nine, uh, delinquency and the penalty. Uh, the city, section A, the city clerk is hereby charged with enforcement of provision to this ordinance, and is hereby empowered to prescribe, adopt, and propagate enforced rules and regulations relating to any matter pertaining to the administration and enforcement of provision to this ordinance, including but not limited to the reexamination and correction of returns to which the underpayment or overpayment is claimed or found to have been made, and the rules and regulations promulgated by the clerk shall be binding upon the taxpayer. Provided however, all such rules and regulations and decisions shall be subject to the approval of the mayor and city council. The city clerk may request the assistance of the city attorney in enforcing this ordinance. Section B, any person who purposely refuses to file a return, pay the tax due, or unknowingly files a false or fraudulent return required herein shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, subject to a fine of not more than one hundred dollars for each violation, imprisonment of not more than thirty days or both. Each violation shall constitute to be punishable as a separate offense. Section C, the city shall be entitled to recover from violating restaurant all costs and attorney, and reasonable attorney's fees incurred by the city in enforcing any provision of this ordinance. Section D is for lien. A lien is granted unto the city of Paintsville upon all property, real and personal, of any restaurant facility to secure the unpaid tax receipts due from the restaurant. The lien shall be perfected by filing a notice of tax due and statement of lien in the office of the county clerk describing the property on which the lien is asserted. Also during this time, any business license valid in the city shall be revoked. Amendment to the section on keeping of records, section one, sixteen point twenty-one. This section reads, to determine the accuracy of any return filed, or if no return was filed or due, to determine the amount of tax due pursuant to this section, the city clerk or his or her designee shall be permitted to examine the books, papers, and records of any restaurant doing business in the city. The city clerk may compel production of any restaurant's books, papers, records, and vendor's contact information. Any restaurant shall upon receipt of a written request from the city clerk or his designee authorize its vendors to disclose to the city clerk or his or her designee that goods and services, including the quantity and price thereof, furnished to the restaurant, in the event an investigation is conducted and it is determined this section has been violated, the violator shall be responsible for all costs of the investigation and collection, in addition to the tax interest and penalties otherwise owed. Those are the amendments.
I'll need a motion and a second to that, is that correct, Dick?
Yes, first reading.
First reading.
Make motion, I'll second that.
Has it gotten as far as we've revoked any licenses?
Well, actually, actually, and I am allowed to discuss some of this, I, right? I wanna make sure to do everything legal, actually, we, our original ordinance, we, we didn't have much, much teeth to be able to enforce people that, that are, that are not or do not pay their taxes. This will at least give us some, you know, a little more bite, to be able to make sure that we get the taxes in that the city deserves.
Is that a hundred dollar fine, did for violation, is that, is that something state statute says, I mean, or is that just something we can put in there? Would we, could we increase that if it, if it gets to be, I mean, if we decide it to, or is that just a state statute thing?
Well, criminal law is a matter of, of state statute, so, the, uh, fines, any penalty will have to be in line with state law.
That's what I said, that's what I'm.
For, for this misdemeanor.
The biggest ad was section D. And
A lien?
Yeah. And, and, and we do have six commission members who have signed that they give their consent on the amendment of the tourism ordinance. So, it was with their consent.
What, was it like forty?
Forty-five.
Up two forty-five.
Up two forty-five, now, we, we as a council would probably want to sit down and discuss that part of it. If that's okay with you all. Okay, open the council.
Open. I've got a problem with the maintenance at the golf course.
Okay.
With all the people that eat dinner over there on Friday night, Saturday, Sunday at the grill. The grass needs to be mowed in the, at the country club, where the, out in the, in the front lawn, and the weeds need to be mowed along the side of the road. I mean, it needs to be presentable, we got a lot of people that come in to eat, I mean, you couldn't get close to that place yesterday.
It was crowded.
And, and we need to present this place, I mean, it needs to be immaculate on the weekends. So, I think Brian needs to put in his daily records that grass needs to be mowed on Friday and Monday.
Do you want me to address that, Mr. Daniel?
Yes, if you would, please.
I will do it.
Thank you, sir.
Surely enough?
Also, what gives the golf board the right to increase green fees when the city has a lease? when the city has a lease, or has, has a, has a lease on the golf course, and they're supposed to go through council? Green fees have to be increased by council, not by the golf board.
Yes, they do. According, according to the lease agreement, anything concerning monies is supposed to go through council. Now, I would appreciate it, and I know you all would, if they would do that.
I don't even know who's on the golf board. That's probably my fault for not asking.
Well.
But I don't even know who's on the golf.
Actually, I don't know where everybody's on there either. But, but the lien plainly, plainly states that monetary decisions have to be made by us.
We probably need to let the golf board know that they're.
I think that we need to let the golf board.
Maybe just sit down and look at the ordinance and discuss it.
And the whole foundation also.
Let them know what their authority is.
So I just sit down with them and just, and, and look at the ordinance, and then I explain to them that we would like to be kept abreast of.
That, that golf board is a creature of ordinance, it exists solely by ordinance of the city. If y'all like the way something, it's written, you can change it. Quite frankly. So just look at it and see what you want. I don't, I, I don't, I've never seen it, I don't really know what it says, what, what authority that ordinance gives that golf board, I don't know. But if you don't like what it says, you can amend it.
My understanding is, is they met, and to me, it's discrimination against three other golf courses members.
Just look at it and just address it with them and see what you want to do, how you want to deal with it.
Two dollars on, two dollars on the, the, on the weekend, and two dollars during the weekday, correct, Tom?
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, it went from twenty to twenty-two.
Twenty to twenty-two.
And then fifteen to seventeen.
But only on members of these three golf courses that's listed.
Yes.
It didn't go up for everybody out of town, just these members of these three golf courses, and to me, that's discrimination against.
I, I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, we would have to show it to you.
Just address it with them.
Yeah.
I believe we could have a say so, and if money's spent, you know, that should be, I think we should have a say so.
I agree.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is, is if, if we're gonna, if this council's gonna be the one to write the checks, then we need to have a say in revenues and expenditures and all that. Does everybody agree with that? And then.
I didn't think that golf board was even active, and I guess it is now, but I didn't, I'd never heard, since we leased that golf course back under.
Mm-hmm.
And I was there on this council, we leased it, they developed that, tried to reincarnate that golf course, you know, one thing, to make it active, you know, I mean, it's very little did it ever bring to us, you know, one thing.
Right.
Or anything, so I agree with you, they need to ask us before they do it.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll sit down and take a look at the ordinance, and we'll go from there, how about that? That work?
We do, sounds good.
That good? Uh, open to the floor. Whoa, wait, wait a minute, I got one more.
I know. I'm the problem child. Going over Carter's lien. Uh, it, I know FEMA is to pay seventy-five percent, that's their share of total monies that goes to buy the properties. Uh, the city is to pay twelve percent.
I thought it was.
Thirteen, thirteen, thirteen.
I thought the city was paying thirteen.
Estimated local share is, uh, the homeowners will donate up to thirteen percent of the appraisal.
That comes out of the money that they receive.
Right.
Okay.
How can we get clear title if the homeowner's appraisal isn't enough to clear that property? If they give up thirteen percent of the appraisal bay?
If they're, if they're willing to sell, they're selling it for a reduced price to get the benefit of the rest of the deal. See?
So you're.
They're, as long as they give, as long as they deed, and they're giving you title, you get title.
What if they're upside down in their mortgage?
Well, that, that's what they're gonna have to deal with and get, to take care of the mortgage.
How can you buy, how can we buy a piece of property from somebody and pay them so much money on appraisal? And they're giving up thirteen percent, and they still owe money on that property when they try to go buy another piece of property? If they still owe monies to a mortgage.
We have that situation?
I don't know, I'm just asking. I was asked by a grandfather of one of the homeowners up there. I didn't know it at the time, but he asked me, but I told him I had to drive it down to see where you come from.
Well, they're going to.
Well, we, the, all the homeowners, they know who they are, and, uh, I've never heard that brought up. Does anybody in the audience know what, know what he's talking about?
You don't, do you?
I didn't say it, we know. I think it, you know.
You have a company, homeowners are having that once, you know, the whole group is paid that the home, the property owners would be paid their full appraisal value minus the thirteen percent, if they would forgive the thirteen percent of the city.
We've, we've agreed to.
Would you all already agree to do that?
And one homeowner had not, they not been more than one, that had bought their properties, and by the time they done that, they would be flipping, they still would be.
They still make.
Yeah.
They still make money on there.
That was then.
I don't see how we could get a clear D if they still owe money on the property. That's what I'm saying.
Well, if they agree to do that with FEMA, then that, you know.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna be the end owner.
FEMA land, right, we'd be FEMA land.
FEMA's getting it, and I, so I don't know how FEMA's got the deal worked out.
Miss Ki, Miss Kim, would you like to jump in here? Would you like to get your feet wet?
Not without documentation in hand.
Okay, alright, I understand that.
Well, Regina, do you know anything about that?
I'm not aware of any particular circumstances. But all the homeowners signed a voluntary interest form, which meant that they were interested in being in the project, so they can't be in the project unless they want to be. I mean, the, the city can't make them, no one can make them do it. Um, we didn't look at people's mortgages, we just assumed that if, you know, that they're in a dire situation, and they need a way out, and if you're upside down, you might have to work that out with your bank.
Yeah, I mean. These, they look at the mortgage holder's position. They're gonna be in a position to get something back as opposed to having a mortgage on something that's gonna be destroyed ultimately anyway. You know what I'm saying, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that FEMA's allowed for this and to some degree, but I don't know. I don't know, actually, the city's not gonna be the title, we're not gonna be the title.
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
The city will be.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be our green spot.
And they have to be used for green space from here on out. Can't put anything on it ever again.
Because of dangerous.
Is that upon completion of a project?
That's all, yes.
So, that's a good question. It'll be when it's all completed.
Yes, Miss Regina.
Um, there, there is a process for a homeowner, which has been explained to them all, these appraisals were done by the city. There is a process allowed by FEMA for them to get an appraisal of their own, but it has to be an appraiser that is certified in Kentucky and one that the city approves. So if they want to pay for another appraisal by an appraiser of their choice, it's at their cost, but you have to approve who the appraiser is, and they can do that if they're not, if they're unsatisfied with their appraisal amount. So there is, that, that will come up later as they get further into this. Um, but everyone that's participating was participating on their own accord. Um, and they agreed to, so I'm, I'm assuming that they were aware of their circumstances when they agreed to participate. If there is someone that has a circumstance that is difficult for them, they need to come, come on and talk to the city, and let's see what we can do and how we can work on it, because we're not aware of it.
Okay.
I didn't know anybody, Tom, really, I, I've not heard of anybody.
And just to be clear, uh, Mr. Baldwin, what will happen is the, we'll purchase the properties from the homeowners, and the city will own, will, will own all that property, and then the mitigation will start, and that's when they go in and they'll repair the slide.
Mm-hmm.
And then, all that will be green space forever. So there can never be.
Or nothing else.
Built on, on the property that has walls.
Tearing the house, tearing all the houses down, right?
Yes, you'll tear all the houses down, you'll just leave green space.
We can't put a park or anything on it.
You can put a park there, you can put a trail there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's green, that's green space.
But you cannot pave the trail, it can only have gravel on it, you can have no paving, you can have no buildings with sides on them. Uh, you can have.
Even have shelters.
Picnic shelter, things like that, but you can't have any type of enclosure.
Take a step.
Right.
Uh, occasionally, they will approve a restroom with walls, occasionally. If you can show that you have a neat, you know, or you can build a park in.
Or they can just use that green space to use the restroom.
It'll help perk mine.
Yeah.
So Mr. Daniel, if you ask someone to, please ask them to come and speak to the mayor, so that you can be aware of the situation. I'm not the project manager on that, but someone involved is, and I'll let them know that their city is concerned, and they can, maybe we can all work together to try to come to some solution.
I don't want anyone to always love him more.
Miss Patricia, did you have something?
I did, the streets, I had some people comment about the condition of the streets, what job when they can be repaired.
Uh, we, we have sent in a, Joe's not here, is he? We, we've sent in a very substantial request. Now, whether or not we get it, I don't know, it's yet to be seen, but, you know, once they issue us the amount of money that, that we can use, then, but we have requested several streets. I'll put it that way.
Euclid is a state.
Do we get a blacktop laying off of it, Bill Michael?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think so, I don't think it's open yet. Uh, but.
They're letting it in Pike County, I saw them, that's Pike County. Euclid, in Euclid, it's a state maintained.
Yes.
And it's one of the worst ones.
Yes.
And I wonder where the state is.
They done.
I mean, they, some pothole work, but man, it's still, it's still pretty rough.
We got a lot of traffic coming, we got eighteen wheelers coming through, we got coal trucks coming in now. I mean, we need to get fourteen, we need to get fourteen twenty-eight back open or developed, or across the bridge and island, if we can get somebody eighteen wheeler traffic bypassed.
Right here's, right here's the thing, and I, I'll cut this short. Right here's the thing that we can't do this time if we have the brick streets paved. You can't milled those brick streets, the, the, the more you milled them, the less the blacktop will hold. The best thing to do with those streets, since people, they don't want to give up their brick streets, but if you cover one up, is to pave over it with two inches of blacktop, just pave over it, is the best thing to do. Now, Joe and I have went as high as we could possibly go, didn't we, Miss Kim? To try and get a substantial amount of money, I'm not gonna tell you we're gonna get it. Uh, but if we do, then it's gonna look nice.
Main Street needs to be on that list.
That was on the list.
I think that's why she's pretty much affirmative, but Bill.
That was on the list. But the thing with Main Street is, is that they milled that brick.
I know.
Oh, they tried.
Yeah, and, and it, it doesn't, it doesn't work real well, you just gotta pave over that.
Say we don't have the brick, put it back.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, they're beautiful, and people don't want to give them up, but.
Well, and the, the main dissonance, you know, that, on Brick Street in Ohio, there's very few repairs in most of the cities come in to have the, or the utility.
But now, that, that's where we stand right now, does that answer your question? I can promise you I've done everything I can, and asked for every dime I could ask for.
Uh, one more question, there's different, are we, uh, clear out there on the, on the, good, good goal and all that, I mean, have you heard anything else, or?
Everything is with, uh, E Cammy?
E Cammy.
E Cammy, everything's with E Cammy and we'll say execute everything.
But they've not started any thing as far as any classes right now, have they?
No, not yet.
Well, Bill, I, I just want to reiterate something that you said at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
It's real important, and, and I'm one has to do it too, but I just think it's real important that everybody just trash.
Oh, God.
And, 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 and just, it's bad enough with, and I know they're working on that, I know you've got a committee that, that, uh, is working on it, and it's slow go, I know that. And that's why I was talking, I was staying in touch with some of those people that are on that board, but these vacant homes, and we've got a lot of nastiness. Even everywhere, in every section of the town.
Yes, we do. We do, and it needs to be cleaned up, and if, 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 you know, whatever it takes from my standpoint to get that done, we are gonna get it done.
I don't care about to go out there and do it myself.
We are gonna clean this town up.
We don't want people to come here, come out and live here, in the same way, we don't want to live in this town because it looks the same. Like that big time, farming up a border, just, uh, border drop.
Okay, is there anything from the floor?
How far are we along about getting everybody to sign those papers that we're meant to be signing off here?
I have no idea.
Two signatures.
Huh?
Two signatures.
You want now?
Only like two signatures.
Two signatures, what Miss Kim said, is what we lack.
Are we gonna give them?
Does it got you a hundred percent?
I believe we're gonna get them, no, I mean, they just won't be able to core drill on those people's properties unless they get that right.
They'll just have a hard time doing the core drill if they have to go around those people's properties and not be able to go across it, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's gonna be mess up though.
If they don't, if they don't sign to have their properties core drilled, why can't we get an easement across their property? Or, because all that cleanup is gonna be dangerous, it's mean unsuitable living conditions, correct? I mean, that's why FEMA's gonna declare it.
Well, now FEMA plays a big role in this, as to what you can and cannot do, I can promise you. I mean, it's, that's, you're talking about federal government, and you know what kind of shape they're in.
I mean, if they don't sign, my thing is, it's, it's, it's not safe living there. So you can't live in a, in a house that's.
Well, they're talking about people around, but they have to go across.
That they have to, would have to go across their property, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
But you know, if FEMA had done this whole differently, this whole done differently, I don't think we would have all the problems we're having right now. If they just went in and bought the property owners at first, then went in and done all their little legality stuff, I think things would have been a lot better.
That's the federal government for you.
Exactly, right.
Your tax dollars.
We all been dealing with this for a long time, so, two years.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
That's their ball.
We stand adjourned.